Good evening, everybody. This special board meeting of the Board of Education for March 18th, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meeting tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Welcome to tonight's special meeting. In the absence of Chair Lowry, who is away for a personal obligation, I will be chairing tonight's meeting. She will be, however, calling to cast her vote on the matter before us today, and actually she's joining us on video right now. Early Monday morning, Portland Public Schools and the Portland Association of Teachers reached a tentative agreement to reopen PPS schools for in-person hybrid instruction, beginning with our youngest students on April 1st and 2nd, 2021, with the rest of the grade levels to follow. I want to thank the bargaining teams who shepherded this agreement forward after months of planning, preparation, and bargaining with all of our labor partners. This has resulted in a strong plan for safely returning students to schools. We are excited that we are able to welcome back students into school for hybrid in-person learning. We know how much our students and our educators have missed being able to connect in person. That excitement, and my excitement, our excitement, is not because we don't wish to reopen fully every day to all students. We certainly do. But given where we are, this is a big, important milestone. In coming up with this plan, our staff and our labor partners had to wrestle with a number of complexities, including using our racial equity and social justice lens. To call out just two dimensions of this issue: Our Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and Pacific Island families and staff are most at risk of contracting COVID, while the students in these families are often the most disadvantaged by online instruction. We need to keep flexibility in this plan, so that families have the option of hybrid instruction or continuing distance learning for the remainder of the year, while maintaining continuity and educator attention for all students. For middle and high school students, this plan ensures students keep their same teachers unless they are out on leave. We have had to plan within the confines of state regulations, including the six-foot distance between students and the limitations on people per square foot of space, and our aging schools with many undersized classrooms. And for our educators, there are only so many hours in the day. We're driving an aircraft carrier, not a tugboat. We can't turn this ship on a dime. This plan is aligned to a point in time so that we can focus on opening schools as quickly as possible and not spend more weeks and months of planning to open schools. Adapting current plans to every potential new set of state or national regulations would take weeks to change staffing patterns and bus routes, just to name two aspects of the plan. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Happy to. Good evening, Directors. Buenos tardes to everyone listening in. There is only one agenda item on the menu tonight, and I think we all recognize it's an important one. So, in alignment with improving COVID metrics in our community, and after months of planning and discussion, we're ready to move forward into the next phase. In the course of a year, we've had to, we've gone from a rapid and necessary school closure to a comprehensive distance learning model, shift into a limited in-person instruction model, and now into a hybrid version of teaching and learning, which all gets us a step closer to our eventual desired goal of fully reopening our schools. Directors, administration is bringing forth, for your consideration this evening, and pending confirmation of ratification by our teachers' union, a viable in-person hybrid instructional model for our students. I'm grateful that, as a result of months of tireless planning, discussions with our labor partners, and feedback from families, we have a plan for safely returning students to schools. While there's a number of finer details that will continue to be finalized in the coming days, our teams have been diligent and thorough in their planning and work to prepare the school system to reopen and begin welcoming students back, all while observing continued public health and Department of Education guidelines to a hybrid model. So as a reminder, by definition, hybrid means a combination of both in-person instruction and distance learning experience for students, and there's no actual requirement for what percentage of instruction should be in-person versus remote. Moving into a hybrid model does get us one step closer to a full reopening of school. We've identified and put in place numerous health and safety measures and updated standard operating procedures, so we believe with everyone's cooperation, we can return to campuses in a safe manner. In fact, we already have experience with these new ways of operating, given our experience with our limited-in-person instruction programming, which took place at our schools with small groups of students, as well as a variety of student-on-campus activities, including athletics and performing arts. And a large majority of our families have indicated that they too are ready. We know our students benefit when they're able to be face-to-face with their teachers and with each other. And even if only for part of the week, due to constraints over space and distancing requirements, we've observed that our students who have begun to come back over the last couple of months, it's evident in their smiles and enthusiasm for being in class or on the field again. I want to thank both sides for their deliberate work in arriving at this tentative agreement. I know that representatives of both the Portland Association of Teachers and district administration dedicated significant time and effort to arrive at solutions, and I'm appreciative for their persistence. Thank you PAT President Elizabeth Teal, Bargaining Chair Steve Lancaster, and the rest of their team. Among the staff who represented the administration, who played a lead role in these talks, were our Chief of Human Resources, Sharon Reese, and Dr. Sean Bird, our Chief of Schools, who will be providing you with the highlights of this tentative agreement with you next.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, Directors. I'm very pleased to be with you here this evening. Well, what is an important milestone toward returning to fully reopened schools? The plan you are voting on this evening is not perfect, but it is a meaningful and critical step forward for the district, for our educators, and most importantly, for our students. I know you've read and studied the agreement. I would like to mention just a few highlights in it. Hybrid instruction will begin for pre-K and Head Start on April 1st, and either April 1st or April 2nd for kindergarten and first grade. Grades 2 through 5 will begin April 5th. Middle school and high school students will begin hybrid the week of April 19th. For all grades, our cohort models are necessary to comply with the current Oregon Department of Education Ready Schools Safe Learners Guidelines, which include requirements regarding COVID case metrics in Multnomah County and the 35-square-foot rule, that six-foot rule, for social distancing that is in effect under currently published ODE guidelines, which physically limits the number of students that can be in a classroom at one time. The plan gives families options. Families who prefer to have their children finish the school year in distance learning can choose to do so. And we have been preparing for health and safety needs and issues for nearly a year. The safety items in the agreement include HEPA air purifiers for every room or space where students are designated to meet with educators. All schools will have a school nurse or a school health assistant on campus. Each building will have a safety committee, which will include PAT members. They will be required to do a full walkthrough of each school building prior to the opening of hybrid. We will have rapid COVID-19 testing for all symptomatic staff and students, and we're following Oregon Health Authority protocols for contact tracing and for isolation. I should note that these details have been shared with staff and families, including via email this week. I want to thank our educators, those who've shown such creativity and determination throughout the pandemic, and those who represented them in the bargaining. I know that PAT President Teal is joining us in a moment. And those educators who have shared their thoughts, their ideas, perspectives, and their concerns during bargaining, and in the past few days after we announced a tentative agreement. As you know, we have followed the science throughout our decision-making and leaned on public health experts, including our health advisory panel. We are indebted to that team for their incredible support throughout this school year. Finally, I would like to thank my colleagues who spent literally hundreds of hours working towards this agreement. Thank you. And here to provide an overview of what our students and families can expect regarding a student learning experience, and what weekly class schedules will look like for students, is our Chief of School, Dr. Sean Bird.
Thanks, Sharon. Good evening, Directors. I'm thrilled to be here, almost, well, really, one year later, to talk to you about the reopening of schools. As you know, we face a number of challenges and constraints in providing educational program for our students. And upon the school closure last spring, we were forced to change to a whole new model of delivering instruction, comprehensive distance learning, as it has become known, or CDL. Our educators had to quickly adopt and adopted new technology platforms and tools to ensure continuity of learning for our students. As metrics and guidelines continued to change and improve, school districts were able to offer limited in-person instruction, which we started doing a couple of months ago. And we began to welcome back small groups of students so that they could experience in-person instruction on campus. It's provided opportunities to get people to get comfortable with safety protocols that we have in place. And it was also immediately evident when visiting schools over the last couple of months that kids are happy to be back, teachers are happy to be back, and there are lots of benefits, as we all know, to having students in school in-person learning face-to-face. And now, conditions have once again improved. We have negotiated a viable hybrid model of instruction that provides students a combination of in-person instruction and continued remote learning experience. So I want to call out the features of the schedules, and I'm going to talk to you about how that will look from a teacher and student perspective. I know that there are lots of questions about how much time students will spend, who elected to participate in hybrid versus who didn't, and what will happen if a student stays remote versus coming to school in person. So I want to go over that with you tonight. For pre-K and Head Start, our youngest students, as you heard earlier, they'll start on April 1st, and will have four days of instruction a week, with the exception of Wednesdays. Our kindergarten and first grade students will come back on April 1st or 2nd. Half of those students will come back on the 1st, the other half on the 2nd, so that they have a chance to be in the building alone. Of course, our kindergarteners have never been in a school building as a kindergartner yet, so we want to give them a chance to learn those routines that are so important for them. And our first grade students were there, but had to leave at the last quarter of last year, so we want to get them back in the routine, just have a little bit of time in the building by themselves before older students come back. On April 5th, we'll be very excited to welcome back our 2nd through 5th grade students, and they'll be coming once everybody's back. Everybody in elementary school will be coming that chooses for in-person instruction for four days a week for 2 hours and 15 minutes. Students have been placed into an AM or PM cohort, and schools will be communicating with families about which cohort they're in. And when they come to school, they'll really focus on reading and math foundational skills, as well as a variety of other topics, including social-emotional learning. And teachers will also weave in other content areas as appropriate throughout the time in school. Students who choose to not return to school at this time will experience much of what they experience right now in a distance learning environment. However, the times of things that happen may change, because teachers are teaching in school part of the day, and they may be teaching their same class. The students who remain home in the afternoon, some of the activities they do, the times may change from morning to afternoon. But the schools will be in touch with you about your exact child schedule in the coming days. For middle and high school students, we'll be welcoming them back on April the 19th, so we have some more time to prepare for their return. We are very excited to welcome those students back, and due to physical distance requirements, students in those grades will have the opportunity to return for two days a week for about two and a half hours each time. Students will be assigned a cohort, and will either come to school Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday. Wednesdays will remain asynchronous as it is now. I want to talk to you about what the day will look like for students. For middle and high school students, the morning will look very similar to what it does now. Everybody will log on in the morning and have a whole class instruction with their teacher, and if they come in in the afternoon, they will work with the teacher. And the students who choose to remain home will continue their applied learning. So I'm a former English teacher, so I'll just talk to you about what I would do if I were teaching in this environment. If I were teaching English first period on Monday to my students, I would introduce a concept to them. We would, you know, have some, there would be some direct teaching from me, some interaction, maybe in small group breakout rooms in the virtual classroom. And then when those students that chose to come in the afternoon came to my classroom, we would be doing extension activities. So there might be some time where they are working in with one another, interacting with one another, in physically distant environments, of course. Or there may be a time where I need to pull a student closer to do some one-on-one work with that student who may be struggling with the material, or I may need to accelerate students who've already clearly grasped the concept. So then we wonder what will the students at home be doing? So they are going to be working on applied learning, so some similar work will be happening at home, except it will be independent. But then, I can, as a teacher, the next day when I see those, the next time I see those students together in a classroom, I know I can refocus my attention on those students who aren't coming in in the afternoon. I can refocus my attention with what we do in a whole classroom. So maybe when I do breakout groups in the morning, the next time I see my first period class, I might group the students more strategically to make sure that the students who are not coming in for in-person instruction are grouped to get, make sure that they're not missing out on what the kids that are coming to school are getting. So that will, students in high school and middle school will run their schedule, so they'll be attending their classes, seeing their teachers in high school two periods a day, and in middle school three periods a day. And it is designed to reinforce the learning that's happening online. So that is what the basic outline of the day will look like. And it's, you know, focused on continuity of learning and making sure that the learning that's happening is reinforced in a variety of ways, just like you would do in a regular classroom. When I was a teacher with people in front of me all the time and no distance learning, there were still, the first 20 minutes of class I would generally teach, you know, I would generally be giving direct instruction, and then kids would go off and do things to apply the learning. And that's the same way this will work now. You can think of the morning time where kids are in classrooms as the direct instruction time, with some breakout groups and those kinds of things, and then in the afternoon is the reinforcement time. So we've heard different versions of what people think it's going to look like, but it is our expectation. At the bargaining table, we were very clear about this and agree that the focus of in-person instruction is academic in nature. Of course, interaction is important, and of course, that's part of being in school, but the focus of the day is going to be academic construction. And with that, I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Director Bailey?
A year into this Zoom stuff, and we're still doing it. Good times. Okay, thank you, Sean and Sharon. Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6269, Agreement for the Return to In-Person Instruction Between Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon?
So moved.
So Director Brim Edwards moves and Director DePass seconds. I'd like to now invite PAT President Elizabeth Teal to address us. Elizabeth?
Hello. Good evening. Good to see you all. I want to start by thanking you guys for all of your commitment to this process. It has been an enormous job crafting the agreement before you today. And both sides of the bargaining table have shown an enormous amount of perseverance. But I specifically wanted to talk a little bit about our PAT bargaining team while I have the floor. I want everyone to know that these are classroom educators. Our bargaining team is made of educators who have been working in comprehensive distance learning conditions in real time, supporting their students and families through the process of all the changes we've been through, and coming to the bargaining table in addition to the enormous job of teaching during this pandemic. And the agreements that we reached will be the teaching and learning conditions that our bargaining team is working under as we move forward this spring. So I want to thank the members of our team for their enormous work hearing from all of our educators and trying, and working diligently to bring us all to an agreement that's going to work on the ground. Throughout these negotiations, PAT has made it clear that any return to in-person instruction has to be done safely, with adequate protections for educators and our school communities, and it has to be done equitably, without sidelining the needs of our most vulnerable students or anyone who will continue to work remotely. And we have made enormous strides towards those shared interests. I also want to acknowledge how much harder it has been to get here after the governor's order that accelerated the timeline at a stop with the planning that was underway or the start of fourth quarter. And cutting out a week or more of planning time is undoubtedly going to make things more chaotic and stressful than they needed to be. And I know in this week right now, as everybody is scrambling to prepare for the transition to come, there's a lot of anxiety and a lot of unanswered questions. However, I am so happy to be here tonight to tell you that PAT members have voted to ratify the tentative agreement, and I urge you to do so as well. Educators are so excited to see our students face-to-face and to provide them with the social-emotional connections that they can't get through CDL. It is truly going to be a celebration when we get in the same spaces with our students. I also want to acknowledge that there's no agreement that could have made this total transition of our district easy. It's going to be hard, but we were able to reach a deal that creates the strongest parameters we could to ensure the transition to hybrid education in our schools will be as safe and equitable as possible. We know that nothing about the next two months is going to be normal. We are still in a pandemic, and we must continue to be cautious with the health of our students and their families. And we know there is new contagious, new, more contagious variants spreading, and it's not time to stop being vigilant. The CDC keeps reminding us of that. This is one of the reasons that many educators have said it would be better to remain in CDL for the rest of the year. We know that's not the option in front of us. But the idea of using this time to plan and invest for a better year in the fall is something a lot of people have been talking about. We have no interest as educators in going back to normal in the fall, because Oregon Public Schools haven't been meeting our students' needs for decades. This pandemic has demonstrated what a critical institution public schools are in our communities, and the central role that schools play in the social-emotional well-being of our students. And after decades of hearing there's not enough money, that we can't afford to give our students what they deserve, the pandemic has also proved that there is money for things, there is money available for things that we know are important. We are very pleased to know that PPS is receiving, I believe, $75 million in new federal funding from the American Rescue Plan. It is so needed to invest in the things that we need to make this hybrid transition work, and to make things work as we continue through the pandemic in the fall, hopefully with much safer levels of community spread and hopefully with herd immunity. We're excited that that hopefully means we can significantly increase our custodial staffing to make sure our buildings are well-maintained and clean. And we imagine, please imagine, if we could use all the energy and time and persistence that it's taken to bring us to this point right now, and that we've used to plan the next eight weeks of instruction. Imagine if that same amount of energy is invested in advocating for the systemic changes and ongoing funding that we need to give our students the engaging, hands-on, relevant curriculum that they deserve, the individualized support, the access to opportunities, and all of the social-emotional supports that are so crucial. I look forward to working with all of you to ensure that we do eventually get back to full, that when we do eventually get back to full in-person instruction, that is better than what we've seen before, designed to prioritize the equity and social-emotional wellness of our students. We are working hard around the clock to figure out how to problem-solve the next steps in this fall, and really excited for the payoff of having those in-person connections that we've been missing so, so much. So thank you all for having me here tonight, and I hope you will vote yes to ratify the agreement.
I'm delighted that PAT has, that your membership has voted yes to ratify. Now I'd like to open it up to board comments. I'm guessing that our board members might want to say a few words. Director DePass, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Teal and Superintendent Staff, for the work that you've put into making this imperfect agreement, which I'm really happy to support. We've gotten hundreds of emails from parents. Thank you for writing in, and yet I'm concerned about who we haven't heard from. You know who we haven't heard from? Immigrant refugee families, people that don't speak English, people that are working two and three jobs, low-income folks. We haven't heard from those people, and we all know going into this that this is not a perfect arrangement. We would probably all want this to be more perfect, but I want to remind us all that perfectionism is one of the tenets of white supremacy in organizations. This plan is good enough, and it's going to take us through the end of the year. I'm really happy to support it, and we'll leave space for other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Konstant, would you like to go next?
First of all, I appreciate everything everyone has said. This was a really difficult process getting to this point. I want to say that we haven't spent a lot of time talking about the particulars in Section 2 of this agreement, which is around all of our health and safety precautions, and how we got there, and how we're going to deal with issues as they arise. But I totally support everything we've arrived at there, and I think that was a stellar example of collaboration between our two teams on that part of this agreement. We know there are no perfect solutions, as Director DePass just said, and I have really had a lot of heartache about this, because our kids have really suffered this year, and we know that. And particularly, our most vulnerable students have really suffered. By the same token, our teachers have really knocked themselves out to do their best to figure out how to deliver virtual education, and with the support of our, I think, incredible Central Office team, to develop a brand-new way of delivering curriculum, which is remarkable. And I do think we've made great strides there. That said, the area of particular heartache for me with this tentative agreement is on the instructional time for our middle school and our high school students. And I think that, given the resistance to live streaming for students in, the students who choose to remain in comprehensive distance learning, I understand that this is sort of the only model that was left available to us to provide an equitable option for our students, for our students in the classroom and our students in virtual learning. But I do want to highlight one aspect of this tentative agreement that makes me unable to support it, and that is that there's the clause that mandates the six-foot of physical spacing. And I know what was discussed significantly in bargaining was that that section would address the flexibility to respond to changes in the Oregon Ready Schools Safe Learners Guidelines, which themselves are responsive to federal guidelines. And we weren't able to reach agreement on that, on enshrining that flexibility in this. And so what we have is an agreement to maintain six-foot distancing, and we know that today, it appears that the CDC is going to make a change on that tomorrow, and that the Oregon Department of Education is likely to make a change on that imminently. We also know that there's no defensible epidemiological or public health guidance that says that that's what's necessary. And it makes an enormous difference for our And it makes an enormous difference for our kids because if we simply create the flexibility to adjust to a change in those physical distancing requirements, we can double the amount of live instruction time, in-person instruction time, that our students can have. And Chief Bird, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but my understanding is that, you know, instead of by doubling the size of our cohorts, we could get our elementary school students in school full-time four days a week. And we, same with our, the afternoons for our middle school and high school students. So would double the instructional time for all of our students. And I think, and it wouldn't change the obligations for our teachers. It wouldn't change the agreements that we've come to with regard to simulcast. It really wouldn't change the model that we have forward for teachers, but it would change it dramatically for our students. And I hope that my colleagues will consider rejecting this tentative agreement and going back to the bargaining table. I will say right here that I can support the rest of this tentative agreement. I can lend my support to all of the other imperfect but well-crafted elements of this proposal if we can go back to the table and build in the flexibility around cohort sizes because I think it's a small give and I think it's, would be enormously beneficial to our students. So I don't know where my colleagues are on that. I will vote no. If others agree that that makes sense, then I would be happy to introduce a resolution after our vote requesting that the superintendent and his team go back to the bargaining table and say, you know, our board can live with most of the elements here, but we need to build in that flexibility to be responsive to changes in the Oregon cohort sizes and Ready Schools Safe Learners. That's where I am. I respect where anyone else is that has a different point of view. This is a really emotional issue for me because our kids have suffered. I'm delighted that they're going to be able to come back to school in some way, shape, or form, but I think there's a very easy pathway for us to make that experience significantly better and stronger and more meaningful for our kids.
Thanks, Director Konstant. Director Moore, do you want to go next?
Thanks. Over the last few months, my colleagues and I have received many hundreds, if not thousands, of emails and text messages from students, parents, educators, and community members about reopening classrooms for in-person learning. They offered compelling arguments for competing positions on the questions of when and how to reopen schools safely. These communications have reflected the fact that this community is not monolithic, nor is it binary. The needs of all of PPS's constituencies are varied and often governed by intensely personal circumstances. Many are eager to restore normal school hours. Others, including many in communities of color that have already been disproportionately impacted by COVID over the last year, are deeply concerned about the risks of restarting general in-person classes. Still, others are simply trusting that we do our jobs to balance the complex constellation of factors and arrive at a responsible, doable plan. What unites us all is our commitment to serve the best interests of our students, keeping in mind a whole child. That means doing our best in these unprecedented circumstances to ensure that students experience safe, supportive learning environments that serve both their academic and social emotional needs as best as possible in the context of a continuing pandemic. As this global pandemic continues to evolve, this task is, has been and continues to be immensely challenging. Because we must acknowledge that this pandemic is not over. We can see light at the end of the tunnel, but we must continue to proceed carefully lest we jeopardize the progress we have made to date at great sacrifice, especially in the face of very concerning variants. We all are exhausted emotionally and physical after an extraordinarily stressful year. But the reality is, we must remain vigilant. I am persuaded that the plan before us balances the competing interests. It is doable, it is careful, it has responded to the concerns about safety, it will bring our students back to in-person classrooms, however limited. It will provide, we are already providing extracurricular opportunities for students to engage in the arts and sports and interact with their peers and have that face-to-face contact that we've all been missing. I was, I was probably among the more conservative members of the board in terms of my concerns about health risks, given the way things have proceeded over the last few months, much to almost everyone's surprise, the dramatic decline in infection rates and hospitalizations and serious illness and all the rest of it. I am persuaded that we now can very safely bring students and educators back to the classroom. I think students need this. Frankly, I think we all need some time to engage in simple human interaction in 3D. And I am persuaded that we can do it safely. But we cannot just throw the doors open. That would not be safe. That is not, nor is that being advised by any of the guidelines, either statewide or federal. And I understand that there is great eagerness to maximize the amount of in-person time that students can have in the classroom and that it appears that the CDC may be about to issue new guidelines that would reduce the amount of physical distancing that would be considered safe. But I'd like to directly address Director Konstant's suggestion that we, that we not accept this agreement and go back to the bargaining table. And I would say, my understanding is that the plan that we have before us today has been in the works for many, many months. It includes an enormous array of logistical arrangements. I believe, based on what I've heard in our various discussions with staff and the presentations and offline conversations, and the best information I have available to me as a board member is that if we wanted to redo the, especially the physical distancing conditions within this agreement, and we wanted to dramatically increase the amount of time, if we wanted to change, basically change the essential components of this agreement that we're arrived at after months and months of staff preparation and months of labor negotiations. If we were to do that, it would require that district staff, even assuming that we could get a labor agreement using the new guidelines and that, you know, everything else would shake out, even if we could do that, it would take something like four to six weeks for staff to completely recalibrate every element of this return plan. That means restaffing. It would mean reassigning students to new classes and teachers. It would mean rerouting all of the bus routes. It would mean rewriting all of the operational protocols. And those are just the elements that I'm aware of. I'm sure there are a thousand other details that would also have to be completely reconsidered. I think, I think it would be irresponsible of us, however, however well-intentioned, I think it would be irresponsible of us to, not to accept this agreement as it stands because I think it is the best opportunity for us to get students back to in-person classrooms to some degree at the earliest possible moment. If we do not accept this agreement, my guess is that we, out of the 10 weeks that might be remaining in the fourth quarter following spring break, probably at least half of those weeks would be taken up in new preparations. So I think it would actually defeat the purpose of getting students back to school as soon as possible. So I strongly recommend, I will be voting yes, and I strongly recommend to my colleagues that they do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Representative Shu, while you don't have a vote on this issue, do you have a comment that you'd like to make?
So I've got a specific question. So a member of the DSC reached out to me to advocate for the inclusion of students in schools' safety committees, and I'd like to say that having these committees open to students, if not actively recruiting them, would be excellent, and students would undoubtedly provide invaluable insight. And I sincerely find we can hope, I sincerely hope that we can find a way to do so. And I hope that the current language would permit us to include students. Is that something that we can pursue?
Superintendent?
Well, as you know, this was a tentative agreement with our Teachers Association. I don't think anything would preclude the safety committee inviting or including students. When we talk about a safety committee, there is a required and prescribed safety checklist that's been developed, but I can't imagine any educator would not be open to including our students and understanding how we're creating a healthy and safe teaching and learning environment for everyone.
In that case, I would hope that we begin that process sooner rather than later, particularly for high school students, given the contributions that really our students can make to this process.
Our chief of schools is right here, and so I think let us have a conversation about how to encourage our principals to have a student representative along. As you might imagine, you know, we don't want to make this a cumbersome process, so I don't think you mean 50 students would tag along, but, okay.
I just, I want to appreciate you, Nathaniel. One of the anecdotes to perfectionism in organizations is developing a culture of appreciation and that you continually bring the student voice forward. And I think the way that this is written, it says like a PAT member will be on the safety committee, and it doesn't seem to preclude having student involvement.
Okay, thank you. Director Brim Edwards. You're muted.
Sorry about that. So I had before, I have some comments, but before that, I have some questions that when I read the agreement that were raised that I have asked staff about but would also like to ask them in the meeting, just so we, there's a understanding of what it is we're agreeing to, also by the broader community. My first question is the agreement references a anticipated duration of the 2021 school year, and I would like to clarify about whether or not this would go into the 2122 school year.
I can feel that question. No, not unless the parties agree to extend it. This is only for the remainder of this school year, Director Brim Edwards.
Great, thank you. Also, in the agreement, it says schools will be open for hybrid instructions in accordance with the Executive Board of 2106 and in accordance with guidelines and mitigation strategies set forth by the CDC, ODE, and local health authorities. Are we confident that PPS can deliver on the guidelines that have been set forth?
Yes, so we have been working for the last several months to look at our spaces. We've made furniture adjustments for physical distancing. We've included, we've put air purifiers in classroom spaces. We continue, those continue to arrive and be put into classroom spaces. We have ordered and delivered to schools PPE, including masks, hand sanitizer, disinfecting wipes, all of those kind of things. Our buildings have been cleaned over the last several months as our custodians have been working throughout this entire time. So yes, we do feel confident that we have the safety protocols in place and the strategies to deal with mitigation, the layers of mitigation that are recommended by the CDC and the OHA.
Just to clarify, Director Brim Edwards, for accountability purposes, every site has to, in fact, submit per ODE's template along a number of areas, and so every school campus has to comply with all those guidelines and requirements. To support all of that, the Central Office has constructed countless pages of updated or new standard operating protocols and procedures. So there's an entire handbook that goes with all of these details as well, and ODE has to approve those plans before we can open the doors.
Great, well, I visited Bridger last Friday and saw many of the evidence of the preparation and the planning in place. So another question about the childcare assistance that is going to be offered. Can you speak to, one of you speak to the duration of this and where the funding will come from?
I can take that question too, yes. The duration is for April, May, and June of this year, and so the stipend is an up to $300 per child per month reimbursement of childcare costs. And it is, I don't know if Deputy Superintendent Hertz is on the call, I don't think she is, but it's my understanding that this is eligible for the federal funds.
Okay, and then I had a question. There is a statement in the agreement that I wasn't sure if it was that we were setting a higher standard or a different standard, the state guidance, but it's that any symptomatic student who's tested, even if they test negative, must leave school immediately and not return until allowed by the RSL guidance. And just want to confirm that state guidance and the reason it's in there is more of an affirmation, not a deviation from the guidance?
That's correct. It is an affirmation of the importance of isolating if somebody who is symptomatic. That is correct.
Great, and then I'm going to ask a question. Thanks. Ask a question that I'm surprised Director Moore didn't ask, but I'm going to ask it maybe instead. There's a provision about testing in the agreement, and it says the district shall request consent to test students for COVID-19 from student families prior to the first hybrid instructional day. Testing shall be available when the district has a receipt of necessary supplies to perform the testing, and this has been an issue that we've talked about a lot in the past. And I would like to know whether, what the status of our preparation is to be able to fulfill that provision in the agreement.
So our principals, the testing is site-by-site, so it is not a process that's handled centrally. Our principals have to register on the site, and then they do, there are some training that they undertake, and once they have identified who the primary contact person is, which is school nurse or SHA, and then the backup person, which is the administrator, then, and they do the training, then the test kits are sent to the school. And as you said, families do have to opt in to, or do have to consent to allowing their children to be tested.
And we have the testing kits. And, and we have the testing kits?
We don't have them yet, but the process has been, has begun for registration and then, uh, having those kids mailed to us.
We'll have them, I guess maybe I should, we'll have them by the time schools open, or the schools that open will have them?
I cannot give you an exact date of, of arrival, but that is the, yes, that's the goal. It takes, it does take a couple of weeks from what I understand, but the process has begun in, in schools, so, um, it's our goal to have them as soon, as soon as possible, uh, to the opening as we can.
Okay. And then my last question, um, is that, um, well, I guess back to the testing, I assume that we'll be notified if, for some reason, we don't, we're not able to, um, because we don't have the test kits, um, not able to fulfill that. Um, the, my last question I have is relates to, um, guidance relating to dual-language immersion, special education, and student support service instructors, um, that, that that is, there's going to be agreements that are subsequent to this agreement, and I'm wondering whether, um, what the timeline for that is, and
Yep.
That's something that comes back to the board or is agreed to, um, separately?
In the agreement is that we would, um, form, uh, you know, working groups to solve some of the issues, particularly around the model of instruction and how that works. So the special education one, uh, was worked on today. I think we pretty much have wrapped that one up. Um, and then, uh, the dual-language immersion, we're continuing to work on, uh, some problem solving. So those are, uh, really more like guiding documents to help, uh, employees do their work. So it's not something that would come back to the board for agreement, but it is, uh, just, you know, it's a working committee that's working on things like how do, um, special ed teachers, uh, deliver, uh, certain forms of, uh, services to students. And so there's a group, I was a part of that group today, and I, I think we got to a pretty good place, uh, for some procedures.
Great. Thank you for the update. And thank you, um, to the staff and to Chief Reese for, um, answering a lot of other questions I had, um, once we had the text of the tentative agreement. So if I may, just, um, provide some thoughts about the vote tonight. I've given it a lot of thought, and I want to, um, thank all the parents and teachers who wrote the board about how we should reopen our school buildings for the remainder of the year. And, um, as others have indicated, we have received, um, over the last several months, a fair amount of, um, communications from our school community on a whole host of different, uh, topics related to school reopening. So thank you to the parents for, um, and, and teachers for sharing your thoughts. Uh, this has been a tough year for students, families, and staff. And it's not over yet. Um, I'd say there, you know, from looking at, um, and from talking to parents and, um, staff, it appears there's close to universal agreement that students in classrooms with their teachers and part of a school community is the preferred way for our kids to learn and teachers to teach in non-pandemic times. So how we reopen our school buildings during a pandemic provokes a range of responses, however. Um, there doesn't seem to be agreement that we want our students and staff. There does seem to be agreement that we want our students and staff to be safe while the pandemic is still present in the community, while people are still dying, and, and, and while only a small percentage of the community has been vaccinated. It's worth noting that today, um, the Health Authority reported another 393 cases and four deaths. Um, definitely on, um, a downward trend, but, uh, we are not, definitely not out of the woods yet, nor do we have a majority of our population, our, um, Oregon population vaccinated. Um, as we all know, the guard, the governor has ordered that in-person instruction begin and that all school staff um, has, have access to the vaccine, which has occurred, the vaccine part, anyway. Um, and, you know, to follow through on our commitment to reopen our schools to in-person instruction. Um, the Portland Association of Teachers have been at the table, PPS staff negotiated for many months. Um, and have represented their members' interest in what they view as a safe return to the school building. So I thank the PAT reps for, um, being at the table with the district, um, in really problem solving in a way to, uh, that how do we best reopen our schools, uh, for all of our, our students? And to Portland parents, um, they hold a variety of views, um, since there's, you know, obviously PAT represents, has represented teachers at the table. Um, Portland, Portland parents, um, have let their views be known in a variety of ways. And they hold a wide variety of views on how and when we should reopen schools. Most, in our elementary schools, um, in the survey we did of, um, parents, most parents want their students to return, return to school, but a significant number want to continue in comprehensive distance learning for a variety of reasons. Uh, because that's working, uh, for their student or because of multi-generational, um, generations in a household, uh, or for a whole variety of reasons. Um, and that number that wants to continue in comprehensive distance learning, um, is even greater for students of color. Um, to serve all of our students to meet both the ODE and the OHA health guidelines and to work within our building, uh, capacities, PPS cannot deliver full-time in-person instruction. At the same time, honor our commitments to racial equity and for all of our students, who for whatever reason can at this time return to a school building. So yes, this agreement has some provisions that different parties may not like, and not as, not as much in-person instruction, it doesn't have as much interpersonal instruction as I wanted or have advocated for. But our school buildings will be reopening, and students who want to will be in the classroom with their teachers and classmates in a few short weeks, which is great news from my perspective. And those that can't be present for in-person learning will still receive instruction in a comprehensive distant, distant learning model. Not perfect, but this is the best plan that staff was able to negotiate with the Portland Association of Teachers to reopen our schools safely and to start in-person instruction and continue to provide instructions for those students who chose, for whatever reason, um, not to return. There's been many who have suggested, including Director Konstantin, that, um, vote, that we could vote no, no tonight. Um, but I, I won't support a no vote, um, because that will not open our school buildings to more in-person learning. In fact, it will likely delay and disrupt our plans to reopen, as this isn't a unilateral decision for Portland Public Schools. Um, I want to thank the staff for the massive effort, um, they have made, uh, both school staff, um, and also the Central Office, uh, to get our schools ready for reopening for hybrid instructions. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I visited Bridger last Friday and had an opportunity to see the health and safety measures in place. Not only will we have building safety teams, as was referenced earlier, hopefully with student reps on them, um, but the district's, um, independent internal performance auditors will also be visiting schools between now and the end of the school year and conducting spot audits to ensure that the buildings, um, are in, schools are in compliance with the health and safety, uh, plans that are in place. So I'm excited that students who want to be back in school now will be able to do so soon. It's a critical step for PPS and our students and staff as we come out of an epic pandemic. And I view our jobs, um, while I, I, I think tonight is, um, a, there, there will be a range of, um, emotions and thoughts about, um, our, our path forward, but I view our jobs as board members to continue to provide oversight, to make sure our schools are opened as safely as possible, and that we support the necessary funding to help students who have struggled or need additional assistance, whether that's academic, social, or emotional. Um, so I'll be a yes vote tonight. I'm excited that our students, uh, will be back in schools.
Thank you. Uh, Director Scott?
Great. Thank you. Thanks, sir. And it was nice, it's, it's, thanks, it's been great to hear from everybody, sort of, their views on this as we go forward. Um, yeah, I've spent, as Director Brim Edwards said, you know, a lot of time thinking about this, and a lot of time talking to people and corresponding with folks in the community about it. Um, you know, this agreement is not perfect, as others have said. Um, you know, there are, are quite a few things that I would like to change if it were just up to me. Um, you know, others have mentioned, but it appears the CDC is going to announce shortly that schools can operate safely with three feet of distance instead of, of six. Um, I, I would prefer an agreement that allows for more, for changing public health dynamics, um, and advice as, as, as we learn more and as, as, as things change, and then allows us as a district to quickly adjust as we, as we learn those things. But at the same time, I know there are also things that PPS staff would like to change. Um, and I know there are things that the Portland Association of Teachers would like to change. And, and I think what we have in front of us is the definition of negotiation, and it's the definition of compromise. Um, no one got everything they wanted. Um, and I, I think this is also a good time to, to reinforce the importance of collective bargaining. Um, it's not just a hurdle that needs to be overcome in a process. It's an essential component of, of running a school district, and I think we always need to view it that way. Collective bargaining requires co-creation and it requires compromise. Um, it also requires responsibility, and that's responsibility both on the part of management and also responsibility on the part of labor to do what is best for our students. And that's the lens that I'm using, um, as I've evaluated this, this agreement that's come forward. I, um, I heard from a number of people, um, over the last couple of days, um, who think this agreement should be rejected because it doesn't go far enough to get our kids back into the classroom. And I think to that group, what I would say, and, and that group who's been passionately advocating, you know, for our kids for, for, for weeks and months, um, I want to remind them that it's, this, what we have before us tonight is not a choice between, um, um, this agreement and, and some ideal agreement that we, that we, that we would love to have. It's a choice between the agreement in front of us and nothing. And as some of my colleagues, um, you know, have already said, rejecting this agreement means rejecting in-person instruction for at least a few more weeks, if not for the rest of the school year. Um, and, and I think, you know, that's an important dynamic to understand. The other side of it, as, as others have mentioned, there are other people who think this agreement goes too far. Um, and I would say for those families and those teachers and those community members who have been passionately advocating for the health of our students and for the health of our student families and the health of the larger community, um, you know, what I'm hoping with this agreement is that we can spend the next few weeks demonstrating that we can reopen safely, that we can meet these metrics, and that, and that, and that we will not be contributing in any way, um, you know, to the spread of COVID within, within our communities. I think this disagreement really is the rub, and it's the difficulty that we have, um, moving forward as a district. We have a district that's split. It's not split 50/50, but again, according to the survey results, it's split 70/30. And even if you don't believe the survey results exactly, um, it's somewhere probably in that ballpark about whether it's safe to return to school. And, you know, we have a, a responsibility not just to the families that want to return to school and, and not just to the families that are nervous about it, but, but to both of those. Um, we have to provide, we have to do everything we can to, to, to get our kids back, um, you know, for those families willing to come back in a way that, that begins to reestablish some of those, some of those routines. We have to also keep providing the same education to the roughly 30% of our families that are not comfortable opting into hybrid. Um, and I think that plus the social distancing requirements, um, you know, that, that we were, again, negotiating under that may change. You know, it's one of the key reasons for this, this sort of morning-afternoon structure, particularly at the middle school and high school level, um, that's going to allow all students to learn new material together. And then students who are returning in person can get that additional help and reinforcement from their teacher in that material. You know, again, i- is that an ideal situation? No, an ideal situation is that we didn't have a pandemic. That's the ideal situation. But the reality is that we do, and, and we're working our way through it, and I think we're trying to find the best compromises that we can. We know things are going to continue to change. As they're changing every day, they're going to continue to change over the next few weeks and months. As staff and others have noted, the district can't change schedules for 50,000 students on a dime. And I think that's an important logistical component that I, I don't want to forget. Um, but I do, I do expect, uh, and I'll be asking the superintendent and staff to continue working with PAT on changes that, that we can make that will benefit our children. Um, and, you know, if there's a way to incorporate and, and, and talk to PAT about this new three-foot guidance and, and a way to incorporate that, um, so that we can bring even more students back into the classroom safely, um, then I think, I think, I think we should, we should do that, uh, even after, you know, approving this agreement today. Um, looking forward, I think that's another really important thing for me, is, is not just what are we doing for the rest of this school year, but, but what, what do we do moving forward? I'll, I'll just put on the record right now, I expect PPS students to be back to school five days a week full-time with the start of the school year in September. Obviously, things change all the time, but, um, you know, we, you know, we know that by that point in time, all adults will have the opportunity to be vaccinated. If, again, we're listening to public health officials who are telling us that they expect case rates to decline dramatically as the adult population achieves herd immunity. And I think as a result, assuming that those things all, all come true, we have to achieve this goal of full reopening. And the next two months can show the, the, the families in our district who are reluctant that we can reopen safely and bring folks back. Um, even then, even in the fall, uh, we're still going to need to provide some sort of, of, of CDL option for those students who are medically at risk, because students will not be vaccinated in the fall. Um, and, and, and hopefully we have the state and federal funding coming forward that, that, that's going to help us do that. But, but we need to create that program, and we need to plan for a full-scale reopening as well. I actually think when I'm looking at this agreement and what it achieves, it helps us move, um, more towards that as well. And, and, and again, eh, what I would be really concerned about right now in rejecting this agreement is that even if we got something that was marginally different, you're, you're delaying that reopening even further. Um, you're putting it even, even, even further down the track in terms of showing families that we can do this, and I think we make it harder in the fall. Um, I want to agree, uh, sort of in closing with, with Elizabeth Teal. Uh, I, we can't just go back to the old normal, um, that wasn't working for all of our students and for all of our community. And as we think forward towards that full reopening, we need to be thinking about how we're doing things better. Um, you know, to get every, as we get everyone back into our schools full-time, and, and how we, how we use this as an opportunity to fix some of those longstanding systemic problems. So just, um, in closing, thanks to Guadalupe and his entire team, thanks to Elizabeth and her PAT negotiating team. Um, I think it's now incumbent on all of us to make this agreement work for our students and families, which has to be our primary goal, um, as we move forward. So, uh, I'll be voting to support this.
Thank you. Director Lowry?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm coming to you from my car. As, uh, Director Scott said, I'm, uh, out of town and so, uh, joining you as I can. Anyway, um, I agree a lot with what Director Moore and Director Scott have said about, um, this plan. Um, I, I will be wholeheartedly supporting it because I do think it is exactly what Director Scott said, a compromise. It's a co-creation, um, with our, uh, labor partners and with our district staff. And it does not do everything everybody wanted. Um, on a personal note, I know that for my high school student, this easing back and not going full five days right away will actually help. There is a lot of anxiety. Um, after a year of pandemic and after a year of, of public spaces not being, um, necessarily safe, I think this will be, um, helpful to her to ease back in. I know that, again, we do have a very diverse school district, and just because something works for my child and will benefit her doesn't mean that that is universally true. Um, one thing I would like to quibble with, uh, Director Scott a little bit on there was his 70/30. Um, I think it's clear that 30% of students have said hybrid, uh, or CDL only, and 70 have said hybrid. That 70 did not say full five days. Um, they kind of subscribed to something that was as yet unknown. So I think if we say 70% of our families want full reopening immediately, that is not actually accurate. Um, and I want us to be careful as we think about, there's maybe three buckets where people fall into full reopening immediately, hybrid, and then the remaining comprehensive distance learning. And I feel like, as other directors have pointed out, this agreement gets us moving forward to our desired outcome for fall, which would be, again, I would hope, full reopening. It depends on where we are with the disease. Um, but I do think that this gives us time to practice being in school in a pandemic and, uh, make sure that our safety protocols are working correctly so that we can keep all of our students healthy and, um, our staff as well, so that we can continue on a path to having fully reopened schools. So I will be, um, vociferous yes tonight.
Hey, Director Bailey, I have a clarifying question and, um, statement. Do you want me to do that now, and then you can have the last word and close this out, or do you want to go?
That would be great. Go for it.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, so I agree with every, what everyone said around compromise, and I've really wrestled with this, and I can digest the degree of compromise that is in this agreement. Um, it's not perfect, especially for our older students, but I really can, um, accept that. Um, I do, however, want to respond to Director Moore's point. The beauty of, um, just going back to the table to create flexibility around the cohorting and the physical distancing is that it does not, in fact, change our model. It does not require staff to completely recreate the plans that they've made for hybrid learning. And, and, or this is what staff has told me, and Superintendent, I'll let you weigh in on this, or, or Chief Byrd. It, all it does is it changes the cohort sizes. It doesn't change the, um, experience and the relative experience between our students who choose to remain in CDL and those that are in live instruction. It just, it changes the cohort sizes. It just it changes the cohort sizes. So if if Superintendent, if you want to weigh in on that, I do think that's a really important point, because it is, it would, it remains the same model, the same online instruction for students, for all students, for half the day, and then the other half, live instruction just for a bigger cohort.
Why don't I let Dr. Byrd take a crack at answering your question first, because I have a running list going through my head right now. Sean?
Yeah, so thank you, Superintendent. So in terms of the, if if you just looked at the physical distancing and went from six feet to three feet, in terms of the model we currently have, you theoretically could go from two cohorts in high school and middle school to one cohort, because if you think that's half the distance, then you could fit that many more students in. And and considering the number of students who have signed up to come or who we anticipate coming back, that would be true. So instead of two cohorts, you'd have one cohort, which would allow for four days of of in-person instruction. It would not significantly impact the elementary model, however, because those students are already divided into AM and PM, and you couldn't, I mean, you could perhaps collapse an AM or PM and make it. But there are other challenges with making full-day classes. The other thing I would say is that while, yes, numbers, it will work, and that will that would give you one cohort in middle school and high school, we've taken furniture out of these buildings. So it would have to, the buildings would have to be re, you know, reset with furnitures. In some cases, the furniture is in the building, so that's not a big deal. In other cases, we've moved it and stored it. So there there would be a time factor in in resetting the buildings. But you are correct in that the model would remain, AM would still be distance learning, and PM would be in-person. And the reason we couldn't change it beyond that is because the students who, there will still be some number of students who remain in distance learning, and they would have, we would not be able to restaff the district in order to to serve that, the full-day model.
And and I wouldn't advocate for that either, because I think it's really critical that we maintain equity between our students in live instruction and our students who choose to remain in comprehensive distance learning. So thank you very much. That point was really important, and I just would like to believe that we could all call ourselves to our our highest selves, get back together, discuss only this issue, because we know that keeping keeping the current language that we have is not good policy because it's not guided by science. And it's it's it it eliminates some opportunities that could be, and I believe would be really beneficial for our students. So thank you, Director Bailey. That was a super important clarification for me that the public could could hear that. Thank you.
Superintendent Guerrero, did you have anything you wanted to add on this issue?
I just want to appreciate that directors have, you know, amplified what we've heard, our very diverse perspectives and and viewpoints from from parents, caregivers, and families. You know, there's no one right answer. We have very strong opinions along the whole continuum, and we've just tried to arrive at a viable model that works in collaboration with our all of our labor partners while still moving us towards greater in-person instruction for those families who elect to participate with us. So I won't go over all the points, but there were some very real constraints in arriving even at this model, you know, and a primary one is our district runs on the talent in this organization. And the, for me, you know, being student-centered about not breaking the stability and continuity of relationship between our students and our teachers, who even through a distance learning model, have, you know, deepened that relationship, and it it would be disruptive, and I'm not sure always healthy, to to reassign needlessly greater numbers of students. So thank you for considering this. I know, again, staff and and our partners spent endless time working through this. Our school leaders are spent another full day working through logistics and details required to pull this off at the school level, because in the end, you know, we we have to support it, making it making it happen at the campus level, so we can communicate with clear detail to our students, their individual school schedule, and and know what to expect when it's time to come back, or what to expect if they're staying home. So thank you.
So I did want to go back to the this sort of one, I think, sticking point that we've talked about tonight, and that would be what what would the actual turnaround time be if we tried to renegotiate the six-foot agreement? First of all, we'd have to wait for CDC and OHA working through our plans that then have to be approved by ODE. What what's your estimated turnaround time, even even if, and again, any kind of bargaining time in there as well for that to happen?
I I can certainly let every cabinet member in the virtual green room take a shot at the pinata here, but I don't, because I don't think there's an exact, concrete answer I can give you, Director Bailey. There's there's federal guidance that 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 will need to be published, that will need to trickle down through the states. I don't know how the governor's office or the Oregon Department of Education or the Oregon Health Authority will interpret any order to make adjustments or not, the time that they need to redraft guidance to go out to school districts, which just from the trend, takes takes a number of weeks, we know. And then we have to digest and interpret those, and then go through the whole logistical exercise. So it's, you know, it's bus routes, it's meal and nutrition, it's it's, you know, it's all the behind-the-curtain stuff that happens, you know, technologically, you know, to regroup students in our information systems. It's a lot of unglamorous work that's necessary, that that has to go in to it. And then, again, the staffing piece is a big one, and I'll let Sharon elaborate if she wants to. And that's assuming we're exactly on the same page in what we would want to accomplish and the kind of model we would want to morph into with every one of our labor partners. So Sharon, do you want to elaborate a little bit? And if there's anybody in the green room who really wants to make a point, please let me know.
May I interrupt? Director Bailey, excuse me, Sharon, I am obligated at 7:15, which was about six minutes ago, somewhere else. And I appreciate the conversation, but I actually need to leave. And I'm concerned about, you know, the conversation is good, and yet we're kind of going down a path of what would it look like to reconsider? I think we reconsider, we're looking at an additional six to eight weeks, as we just heard the superintendent say, which I feel is not not a great solution. I mean, we we have an imperfect solution that starts kids in schools April 1st, 2nd, 5th, and the week of the 19th. I I can't imagine it getting any better than that.
So.
Also, the most, I need to leave.
I'm I'm, as far as I'm concerned, since I raised this, we can go to a vote, because it doesn't appear that there's support for this. But I I want to clarify what I was asking, which was to change the language to be flexible based on changes to the Ready Schools, Safe Learners guidance, which is, I believe, what our bargaining team was seeking to do in the bargaining all along. And we would, we would still get our kids, we could still get our kids off to school on the schedule that we anticipate now, and if there are changes, then we could adapt. But Michelle, I appreciate your your time, Crunch, and I think this is a hypothetical exercise at this point.
Okay. Michelle, can you hang with us through public comment? That's that's what's coming next.
Sure. I I mean, I literally, I can, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll stay as long as I can.
Ms. Bradshaw, do we have public comment?
We do. We have Kevin Perlis.
Hi there. My name is Kevin Perlis, pronounced Perlis, spelled P-E-R-L-A-S. My pronouns are he/him, and I am a Pacific Islander. I am a parent of three children in the Portland Public School District, two currently attend IDW Wells High School. My comments tonight focus on increasing in-person learning time for middle and high schoolers like them. I respectfully ask the board members to vote no on this agreement. I appreciate the hard work you have put in, but this proposal doesn't do enough to get students into the classroom, and I'll provide three points why. The use of an absolute metric. The point that Dr. Constan made earlier was spot-on. She's much more eloquent than I am, so I'm going to skip a lot of the the backup that I had for that and go straight to the fact that an acceptable proposal would use language that enables us to adapt as we learn more and follow guidance from leaders in this space. Dr. Byrd confirmed that accommodating a new three-foot metric would not affect the model, and it is feasible to abide by it. However, this plan locks us into a six-foot guideline and doesn't provide any flexibility. The second point is we have inflexible practices here. Middle and high schools across the country, including West Lynn, Wilsonville, Beaverton, and Lake Oswego, are returning to in-person instruction in a manner greater than what's on this proposal. Their enabler is use of technologies like simulcast, which enable educators to serve students in the classroom and remotely simultaneously. And the district has already invested $1.5 million in this, but the Portland Association of Teachers has already ruled out its use. An acceptable proposal would embrace helpful technologies like this that enable our students to gradually phase back in large scale. However, this proposal draws a hard line, stating in Section 1L, quote, "No educator shall be required to offer both distance learning and in-person instruction simultaneously," unquote, which makes simulcast virtually impossible. The third point is an unworkable schedule. The sample middle and high school schedules distributed by the PPS last night were shocking in that the only in-person time for them is, excuse me, one, asynchronous learning, two, for two hours and 40 minutes, two days a week, and three, in the middle of the day, requiring students to spend their lunch hour trying to get to school. And many of these students rely on TriMet, which often doesn't have routes in the middle of the day. An equitable proposal would consider the logistics of getting students to and from school in a reasonable manner for worthwhile education, not just for study hall. It would give students the opportunity to have full-day, in-person, structured learning. And this is being done in Wilsonville, where my friend's daughter is a freshman and is getting more than 14 hours of in-person instruction every week. They can do it. I don't know what's holding us back. This proposal makes it challenging for even the most dedicated families to get their students to and from school, and that's just for five hours a week of asynchronous time. In the introduction, Lead Director Bailey said, "We're piloting an aircraft carrier, not a tugboat. If that's the case, once it's in motion, it's harder to alter course, as you're all saying. This plan points us in the wrong direction from the start, and I urge you to vote no until we can do something like what Dr. Constan said. Please ask the district to go back to the bargaining table and come up with a plan that adapts to CDC guidelines, includes simulcast, and gets middle and high school students in classrooms for full days so they can focus on in-person education." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perlis. Ms. Bradshaw, next?
Yes, we have Rochelle Chase Hibbard.
Thank you for giving me time tonight. My name is Rochelle Chase, C-H-A-S-E, and I use she/her pronouns. And I'm speaking to you this evening as mom to a PPS second grader, and as an educator and a PPS alum, and as a Black parent representing Mom Black. Thank you for giving me time to speak. Somehow, the narrative of the past year has become one where our teachers are the enemy. I've seen parents say that our teachers are on vacation, that they're not working, that they're lazy and titled, and that they're being selfish. I've seen parents of privilege claim concern for marginalized kids, and in the same breath, threaten to pull their kids from PPS if their demands for reopening aren't met, activating on the racial and economic privilege that has harmed public schools for decades. I'm asking you this evening to truly act upon equity and prioritize the needs of our most, of the most vulnerable members of our community. Our teachers are not bargaining for themselves. Our teachers are bargaining for us. Our teachers are safe, they're being vaccinated, but they are bargaining for the safety of families like mine. Mine is a Black and Latinx family, and our PPS student has cerebral palsy and asthma, which which makes him high risk, high risk, both academically and from a health perspective. As an educator myself, I'm not worried about his academics. I've experienced the dedication of his teachers and admin, including his amazing PPS ed staff. I know that they are giving it their all, and I know any compromise we might be making in academics right now is in service of my vulnerable child's health, and there's no question which is more important. I urge you to support our teachers, and in doing so, support our children and our families. As the mom to a vulnerable kid, the health and safety of my child and other vulnerable kids and families must be our priority. Our immigrant communities and our communities of color have been devastated by this virus. Our kids have experienced not just the trauma of a year interrupted, but the trauma of illness and death of family members. Educators know that kids can't learn if they don't feel safe, just as we know that the deferred maintenance of the last three decades find us more poorly positioned than other districts when it comes to mitigation and building. And our teachers, they know that better than most. So I urge you not only to support the teachers calling for equity and safety in reopening, but also to condemn the vilification of our teachers by voices of privilege who accuse them of moral shortcomings as they advocate for the safety of all of our children. Our teachers are professionals and should be valued as such, in spite of the opinion of a local minority of parents unable to emphasize past their own trauma. The last year has been hard beyond imagining, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel, but we're not there yet. Do not allow the sacrifices of the last year to be for nothing by capitulating to privilege and failing to support our teachers and vulnerable families. Do your part to begin to heal the fractures of distrust that exists between communities of color and PPS. Prioritize the needs of our vulnerable children and families. Evaluate the buildings of our most at-risk children, classroom by classroom, and do not penalize our teachers for advocating on our behalf. We will be the ones who remain if families of privilege follow through on their threats, and we are counting on you to do right by our kids. And if it's safe for our kids and teachers to meet in person, I hope to see this board meeting again in person again soon. And speaking of equity, please resume food service at elementary schools to the children who will be continuing in CDL. Thank you so much for your time, and Director DePass, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for your comments.
It's Chair Lowry. I just wanted to interject that we are working on bringing back in-person board meetings, but we were wanting staff to focus on reopening schools and, but we are creating plans for reopening board meetings very soon, and we'll be sharing those shortly. Sorry.
That's awesome. I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
I just wanted to to respond to that.
Okay, Ms. Bradshaw, who's up next?
Oh, we had somebody else sign up, but I don't see them, so that is it.
Okay. It's late. I could comment, but let's let's cut the, cut to the chase. I'll I'll just thank, one, thank our amazing staff who have gone above and beyond all year. Thank you to everybody who's been part of a bargaining team, both our labor partners and our staff, who have worked so hard to try to craft a number of agreements. And thank you to my fellow board members who have been so articulate about the whole range. I I think we really represent the range of voices that we've been hearing. So with that, back to the script. The board will now vote on Resolution 6269, Agreement for the Return to In-Person Instruction Between Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6269 is approved by a vote of six to one. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on March 30. We hope that students, teachers, and staff will be able to rest and recharge during the spring break to be ready to return to hybrid in-person learning. This meeting is adjourned.